Call the meeting to order. Rebecca, please call the roll.
Toohill?
Yes.
Esti?
Here.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
So Elizabeth is by phone?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Sorry.
Okay, um, council, is there any changes to the agenda tonight? Anybody have anything? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the February 13th, 2023 council meeting. Approval of the February 17th, 2023 payroll in the amount of 133,159.57. Consent of park use permits for First Friday's Art Walk 2023. This is a noise exemption. This is for June 2nd, July 7th, August 4th, September 1st, October 6th, and December 1st. Consent of park use permit for Iowa Tourette's advocacy and support. Support, again, advocacy and support. Again, this is a noise exemption. Central consent of park use permit for Fairfield First Baptist Church. Again, noise exemption for May 14th, June 11th, July 9th, August 13th, and September 10th. Acceptance of the Carnegie Museum minutes. Resolution of performance review wage increase in the street department. Approval of total claims in the amount of $377,516.58. We had one claim, more than 75,000 hickey contracting for the Morgan Street paving of 93,322.64.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
By Gandy, second, by Anderson. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Okay, I was wondering about the park use permit specifically. I had some board residents who were voicing some concerns regarding the morning park use. And I was just curious to know if we'd ever considered maybe starting noise exemptions later on in the morning or if that was something that we could consider.
Um, I think we've always allowed these. Um, what time are they starting here? 9:00 AM?
9:00 AM for church service.
I don't think they're that loud, are they?
They do have a band that they usually use. I mean, it's not like, they're outside, so the noise disperses, but that this group, I think, does have a band.
Yeah.
Don't they?
Yeah. Has it been 9:00 AM in the past?
Yep, their summer services, their outdoor ones have always been.
Yeah, at 9:00 AM.
That's when they start practicing and then, I think, 10:15 is when the actual service starts or getting set up.
Okay.
It's not at 7:00 in the morning.
Right.
So Elizabeth, are the complaints from people who are living downtown?
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that the concern was just that, you know, it's so many mornings starting at 9:00, which, you know, on a Sunday morning can be a little, a little early for some people. So I was just wanting to bring that to council's awareness and wonder if there is any consideration regarding, you know, having it start a little bit later and, you know, if there are other organizations that are also requesting noise exemptions at that time in the morning too, especially ones that, you know, have bands and are especially loud.
Is there anybody here from the church?
I don't think so.
No. These are just once a month.
I go to First, I have been going to First Baptist Church.
Yeah, these are just once a month. It's not like they're every Sunday.
And the other request is also a morning request.
Is it an hour later though?
Yeah.
Were there any suggestions, Elizabeth, for a starting time?
I mean, 10:00 AM, even just pushing it an hour later.
You said you had a number of, how many, how many did you have?
I had two.
Two, okay.
This must be at least our third year of doing this.
Yeah.
And we never had a complaint yet.
Yeah, correct. It's my knowledge.
Well, and there really aren't that many days that it would be, being, you know, to my way of thinking, being a problem in terms of it. I mean, it's not like it's every Sunday.
I can let Pastor John know when they're, when they're warming up that they can try and maybe do a sound check and then just do the warm-up without.
Without amps?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that would be great, even that much. And I, I couldn't recall if it had always been this many number or if it was less this year or if it had changed at all either.
I think, I think they've always run it, well, at least in the last three years, they've run it outside for all what are considered summer months. They had one.
Once a month is usually what they shoot for.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, even if they could just consider, you know, not using amplifiers for their warm-up or, you know, their sound checks and.
Yep, I'll let him know.
Okay, sounds great.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Doug, you have some questions?
Yeah, in the minutes for the Carnegie Museum, they referred to a contract between the city administrator and Indian Hills Community College. Has to be completed by March 3rd. Do you have an agreement with them, do you?
We, I personally know I do not.
That's what it says. I'm assuming this is a city contract.
It's a city contract that just has to be reviewed annually. And I've already sent it off to the new CFO who is, she wasn't familiar with it or anything like that, so she's looked at it and she's reviewing it and will get back to the city office. I believe I let her know that Rebecca would be her contact.
When, when does the contract expire?
It doesn't.
So it's just, so it's just.
It's just reviewed. Right, it's just reviewed.
It's not a spreadsheet, by the way.
Probably.
Okay. The only question I had was, at some point in the meeting, they asked people to leave the meeting, continue the meeting in private, then ask people to come back into the meeting. So I'm wondering, did they go into closed session?
Who are we talking about?
Carnegie Museum. Yeah, when they asked Lawrence to step away while they considered his, it was when they asked Lawrence to step away while they just considered.
That's a closed session.
I was there, it wasn't a closed session. They just did him the courtesy of not taking a vote on him being the new director with him in the room.
Okay.
Meeting never closed.
That's the only questions I had about that.
I had one more about the Carnegie too. Just, I think we've mentioned one other time, did they would use last names in the minutes and not just first names for everybody?
Oh, I think that was a different committee.
Oh, was it?
Yeah. But we can let them know.
All right.
Okay, you want to let them know? Okay. Anything else? Oh, John?
One comment. You might get something back from the CFO. They, Carnegie has taken over two or three spaces that had been Indian Hills and there's more display and stuff than there was. I don't think that's been caught the last couple of times they reviewed this thing. So they may ask a question about whether we're still 50/50 on shared, on utilities and things like that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, the last thing I have then is that the, I reviewed all the claims, everything appears to be in order, so I recommend approval.
Okay, great. Nothing else, so call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, so we will move on to public forum appearances. Henson Consulting, this is the initial presentation and we're in this discussion of the search. Replace Erin.
Are you unmuted, Brent? I see Mark.
Yes, absolutely. I was just waiting for a go-ahead.
I see Mark jumped on too, so.
Yep, absolutely. Well, Mayor, Mayor Council, thank you very much for having us here tonight. We're really looking forward to getting the search started here with this meeting. And then I believe you guys have already received the information that we're wanting to meet with you individually Friday afternoon into the evening if need be. Mark and I will be down for those meetings. And so looking forward to that and just really getting this process started in earnest. So we've got a number of things to talk with you about. I've prefaced all those in the memo that you guys were provided. So there's a number of things kind of to discuss at this, at this standpoint or at this current point in time. So we, basically, the things that we're doing right now is starting to develop the position profile, so kind of the advertising plan, you know, how we're going to go into the market and put Fairfield's best forward for this search. And so there's a number of things going on with that right now. Thanks to Rebecca, she's already provided us a lot of very good, useful information. We had requested a number of documents and et cetera to kind of get started on that. If anybody has specific ideas or things that absolutely 100% need to be included, we can talk about that on our one-on-one meetings. So feel free to think about that, bring that up. That'll be kind of a recurring theme with this search. You know, we're going to visit with you several times during the process. So really, you know, we're facilitating this process, but we want this process to be something that the city council buys into and is very involved with. And ultimately, at the end of the day, you know, we're helping you select the person that, you know, the staff member you're going to work most closely with to help guide the organization forward. So it's extremely important that the city council is satisfied with the process, is involved in the process and, you know, kind of as we discussed when I was there in person, you know, of course, that's also inclusive of, you know, trying to include, you know, your key staff and community contacts and et cetera. But at the end of the day, it is the council that makes the decision. So we definitely want to make sure you guys are satisfied with what we've got in the process. And you'll have multiple chances to take a look at, at things. You know, really, kind of the, the major thing, and hate to lead with this, but, you know, because it's a, it's a topic that, you know, isn't always the easiest conversation, but I guess kind of the thing we need to lead with and that we, we need a little bit of indication on sooner rather than later would be kind of what you guys are comfortable with for a salary range for the position. You know, a lot of the other things are going to be subject to change as the process goes on, but that salary range will be important for inclusion in the position profile. And then as we're marketing the candidates, you know, that's, you know, I mean, it's question, question number one, after they've indicated that they're interested in the position and the community, you know, kind of where you at on, on salary range. So I guess maybe no surprise there. So we, so we've got that to kind of discuss with you. You know, there's a number of other things, like I said, you know, we've provided you a preliminary schedule. Certainly, we'd like to know if there's things that are problematic in that schedule from a, from a scheduling standpoint for, you know, a critical mass of the people that need to be involved. You know, certainly, we all have lives outside of city involvement and, and there could be, you know, one person here or there that may not be able to attend a meeting. We'd certainly love to have everybody involved throughout every step of the process, but, you know, we just want to make sure we avoid anything big with that schedule. So I guess those are kind of my introductory remarks. Thoughts and, you know, that, any questions from the council? As far as, you know, as we kind of get started here, you know, like I said, we, we want to make this a process that you guys buy into and support and we want to make sure we meet and exceed your expectations. So I'd love to hear if you guys have any specific input at this point in the process of having reviewed the memo and my, the attachments that we provided.
Well, have we received a contract?
For us?
Yeah.
Oh, um, you know, I'm happy to, not every city.
You don't work with a contract?
Asked for that. I hadn't been asked for that yet, but I'd be, I'd be happy to provide you something.
Okay, and my other question is, well, not to you necessarily as much to the council, who will be their point of contact with the council?
I can be that point contact.
But you're not a member of the council?
Well, then I can report back to you.
Well, I think it should be the personnel committee.
Okay, fine.
So.
Judy's chair of that, right?
Yeah.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's what I expected, but not that I was gonna, I just didn't know the protocol if it would go to the mayor.
I just want to make it clear so that they know what the.
Sure.
Chain of command and communication is that we all know, I suppose.
And, and that's perfectly fine, you know, and that's kind of why we ask these questions upfront, because what we, what we want to respect your existing processes and approach and make sure that, you know, it works well for you guys. So no, I appreciate that input. Happy to do that. What I would propose is that, you know, we basically provide communication to the personnel committee and then copy Rebecca in on that kind of as the staff contact, if that's appropriate.
Yes.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Sounds fine to me.
Okay.
And Doug, do you want to put together a ways and means committee to discuss about the salary range?
Yeah, we could do that. To make motions without effect.
So, yeah, and really where we need to be on that, and again, we absolutely want to, every city is a little bit different. We want to respect your processes and involve those, make sure we get all the adequate input that we need. Kind of what we would like, if possible, if it's possible to have that ways and committee, ways and means committee review done prior to March 9th would be the ideal, because then that allows us to incorporate that in the position profile that we present to you. If that, if that's a possibility, that would be appreciated.
Well, I think it would be important for the personnel committee to review the job description first and update that as necessary.
Yeah, yeah, and definitely, that's, that's definitely something to consider at this point in the process. It's important, you know, pending schedule, I mean, I'd be happy to join virtually for that if you guys would like any assistance with that.
We can work with you there because we know you're on that time crunch to get this out as soon as you can, so that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, the biggest thing would be to have that meeting so that we've got time to get that incorporated in the position profile. It's something then obviously goes to council with the, you know, with that recommendation of that committee would be great.
Okay, great. Any other questions? All righty. Anything else from your side?
Yeah, so, you know, basically, I think the, the big things would be get, you know, make sure you've reviewed that memo, taken a close look at the schedule, compare that to your personal and professional schedules and make, make sure that we've got something that's workable. If there's any issues, really, the next time we're going to be down there would be the March 13th meeting. So that's your next meeting. We'll be there to discuss, you know, position profile and we can obviously address any, any adjustments to the schedule at that point in time. The other thing would be we have provided, and we just provided it late this afternoon, so Rebecca may not even have seen it yet, but we did provide a questionnaire that is what we'll talk through at the one-on-one meetings. And so, you know, some people like to have a chance to look at those questions ahead of time and think about them. Certainly, you don't have to fill out the questionnaire ahead of time, but if, some people like doing that. So we just provide those questions in advance, so Rebecca will forward that out to the council and all the participants, just so that they've got the advance information. And, you know, we, we look forward to meeting with you on, on Friday. So I think that's, other than that, unless there's anything from, from the council, I think that's kind of where we're at at this point in time and unless Mark has any input that he'd like to offer.
I have one more question. Can you give us a date certain when you'd want the job description completed?
You know, the, the ideal is to get it in advance, at a minimum, kind of in advance of that March 13th council meeting. I know that's only a couple of weeks, but, you know, we usually do try to incorporate the job description in the position profile.
Of course.
So that we're providing that in advance, because, you know, basically, if we don't include it in the position profile, then we're going to get contacts from a bunch of people saying, well, what's the job description for this? And then we just send it to them separately. So we just started incorporating it into the position profile. So I would say, you know, the sooner you can look at it, the better.
Right. The chair is indicating to me that she's okay with that schedule. I'm okay with that schedule.
Phenomenal, okay. Yep, yep, it's going to be a tight timeframe.
So we can have it ready by March 13th, City Council meeting?
Prior to that, yeah.
Fantastic.
Yeah, it'd be better to even have it done the, prior to that.
Sure.
The week before.
Do it by Friday, Judy, if you want.
Okay, great. Anything else? Any other questions? Okay, guess that's it.
All right, great, thanks, everybody. Appreciate it and look forward to seeing you guys on Friday and we'll, from there.
All right, thank you.
All right, have a great night.
Next up is Zindi Koss, follow-up on last year's mowing charge, and I don't see her here today. So I think we'll just, we'll move on to Terry Baker. CVB proposed budget and marketing.
Good evening, council. You have in front of you a red binder that is your proposed budget and marketing plan. I've put a lot of goodies in here for you, so this is, you know, take this home in nighttime reading. I wanted you to be aware of some of the collateral pieces that we've already created and that we're continuing to create in the coming year. You'll see in there you have a restaurant guide, the Christmas guide, our newest one is Find a Ride, which is a document that we created for bike riders to get out and about in the, in the county and find some off-the-trail kind of rides. We took this to the Iowa Bike Expo, it was extremely popular document. We also noticed that a lot of other towns took one home with them because they're going to copy it, so we were the little trendsetters there. One of the first documents that I'd like you to pull out and look at is this one with all the blue dots on it. This will just give you a little idea of some of the research that we've been looking at to kind of drive our decision-making process. And one of the things on here is that in 2021, direct visitor spending in Jefferson County totaled $19.8 million. Now, that sounds an impressive number. We are not back to 2019 numbers yet, but certainly it was a considerable increase from the crash that we experienced in the last few years. This number includes the dollars that visitors will spend on lodging, food and beverage, fuel, retail, entertainment, and outdoor recreation. The little chart with the blue dots shows you kind of the distribution of those numbers. The other thing that we noticed of importance is that in 2022, there were 94,483 estimated US adult trips to Fairfield, which is approximately the same number of trips in 2021. However, there was a difference between the day trips and the overnight trips. We saw an increase in the overnight stays of 8.5% over 2021. And we also noticed that people were coming from a farther distance. So we're looking at that as a pretty big win on what's happening with tourism. You'll notice in your pocket, I've given you the proposed, our proposed budget. And behind that is sort of the summary. So it's nice to see sort of those numbers, but it's also nice to know like where, what it all means, where it all goes. One of the things we have in here is I've included for you our target markets, the number of people, the groups of individuals that we're going after, the different demographics that we're looking to attract into the community. We have a variety. We try to align ourselves with the Travel Iowa Office so that we're in step with the state. A lot of the things we do, we actually do some co-op marketing with the state tourism office. This really allows us to get into some publications that we might not normally get into. We're also looking at different emerging markets like the two-wheeler traveler, which would be the motorcyclist and the bicyclists, as well as the RV is going to be another new market that we're going to be looking at. For advertising and marketing, we do a number of different things. Print obviously is one thing that we're doing. We have a number of magazines that we contribute to. You will also notice that we've done something very interesting in the back of your left side of your pocket. You'll see this, this article here. This was a piece that we worked with Food and Travel Magazine to do a feature on Fairfield. They did this article with all the pictures, as well as we have then a two-page spread ad about Fairfield. That's been very, very popular. We did this as a co-op. We took four businesses who agreed to help us pay for this so that it wasn't so much of a crunch on our personal budget, but also gave them some national exposure. That's something that we're looking forward to doing in the future as well and trying to put Fairfield on a bigger regional and national level. Our visitor's guide, which obviously was very popular, will continue to be produced and we'll do a new, a brand-new visitor's guide to come out next February. This year, we did decide to reprint the current visitor's guide with some updates in it in order to do some cost-saving because we did some other things like these big magazine articles. And the visitor's guide was so well-received and still current, so we decided to keep that current visitor's guide moving forward for the rest of the summer. The other guides that we're doing, obviously you have the visitors, the restaurant guide and the Christmas guides. We have in the works a birding guide, a family adventure guide, a meeting guide, and a fishing guide, a group tour guide, and a wedding guide. So we have, we're working on a number of different things to target some different markets. Digitally, we look at maintaining, first of all, a very robust website. It's one of our leading pieces that we drive traffic to and we also can use that to retarget markets in our advertising. One of the new things that we're proposing this year is to do an event calendar website. When we did our visioning session in November with various members of the community, one of the things that was said over and over and over, we don't know what's going on, which was alarming to me considering how many different organizations have websites with events being put in them, but they wanted a centralized location. And after really studying this and stewing on this for a while, I found a company that creates exactly that in a website version. And so we are talking to them now and trying to get something started. The cool thing about it is that it will allow anyone who has an event in the community can create their own login, log their own events in, so it's not one person falling on one person to try to find everything and put it on. Everything will be searchable, so if you wanted to find out what the sporting events in town are for that weekend, if you wanted to find out where the music events are or where the blood drives were going to be, you could sort for all of those things because it will contain all community events, not just entertainment or something a visitor would like. However, we will be able to use that same website to use at our blogs, to, to add different articles and different marketing about the five top things to do in Fairfield this weekend, that sort of thing, and be able to drive that to a tourist market.
Terry, how is that, for lack of a better word, controlled? If somebody puts something up that's inappropriate?
Everything will have, basically, our office will be the one that sees everything. It doesn't automatically get posted, it just, there's somebody has to go and click and say yes, 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 yes.
Thank you.
So that's still going to be a little bit of work on somebody's part. However, I think it should be eventually a lot less work than going through, looking at everybody's websites, everybody's Facebook, trying to find these events and missing half of them, so.
Thank you.
Another interesting thing that we're going to be doing is we're partnering with some social media bloggers. In fact, we're planning a fam tour coming up where these bloggers from the Midwest will be congregating in Fairfield. And they start doing their own writing, writing their own blog. Some of them submit to different magazines. They do their own social media, they usually have very large following. And then we're able to repurpose a lot of that content and get a lot of exposure for the community. And one of the most exciting pieces is that we have been selected by Travel Iowa to be part of their next Soul of Iowa promotional event. This is where they come to town and do video. In some of the communities, they do some really interesting kind of stuff with drones and things. We're not going to get that. We're getting the second-tier level, but we're still getting something. This goes basically on their website as well as we can repurpose that content as well. The next piece I have on here is content creation, that's something we put a lot of attention on. Blogs, we'll be launching our podcast this year, email marketing, video marketing, all of these kind of pieces create content that then we're able to take and use on website and on social media, repurpose in many different ways. We think of this as like being sort of a big hunk of wood that we chop all up and we take out the sawdust and we put it all in different places around the world so people can find out more about Fairfield. And, let's see, and marketing support would be the other big thing here. Marketing support includes those kind of things that we kind of need in order for the marketing to work. So this will be things like the research that we're doing, mailings, printing, the software that we need. And we also have now available to us through one of the, the organizations we belong to, an event economic impact calculator where we're able to take certain data from different events, the number of people who came, how long they stayed, that sort of thing, and we're able to plug it into a data system that shows us what that impact was on the community in terms of financial success so that they can also see where they need to improve the event or the kind of impact they're having on the community. Another thing that we'll be also adding in is some trade shows. Finally, we feel like we can do some trade shows. In January, I did do the Iowa Bike Expo. In January, I did do the Iowa Bike Expo, it was extremely successful. I have now a really nice email list of people who are interested in biking in southeast Iowa. And because of our, one of the associations that we belong to, we were able to virtually do the American Bus Association show this year that targets group travel. So that's, that was kind of exciting. And I believe you have in your packet, you'll see this, this piece here. This is the piece that we actually send out to bus tours and group travel, so. That's about it for all I've got.
Have you given any thought to a themed bicycle ride?
To themed bicycle ride?
Around the county, like Bike Van Buren.
Well, the Chamber actually hosts an event where it's a gravel grinder kind of ride, where it's, it's kind of for people who are real rugged and want to do that kind of thing. And they also have their baffle taffer ride, which I don't know if it's going to continue, but, but that's certainly something that we can look at. They sort of have taken on that activity and so we, we try to market that for them, which was one of the events we marketed at the Bike Expo, obviously. But yeah, that, I think that would be, be really nice to.
I think the Bike Van Buren is mostly hard, hard surface.
Hard surface. The challenge that you have, obviously, well, there's a couple of different things. So I have heard that bike riders who are really into bike riding really love our gravel roads and our dirt roads because there's not as much traffic on them and they love the challenge. So that's kind of an interesting angle to take. Now, obviously, that's not everybody, certainly not me. So what we did with this particular document, you'll see on this, if you scan these, it'll take you to an app that's called Ride with GPS, and it maps out the whole route for you. And we're going to expand on these and actually have some longer ones. I'm working with some of the bike riders right now to do one that would be like an overnight. So they would camp somewhere and then continue on to the rest of the route. So we'll kind of have that, but maybe not as an organized event. Any other questions?
I think the Bike Shop uptown does a Friday night ride every week, too.
Yeah, they do. It's usually Thursday and then sometimes Sunday morning. Yeah, and we actually use a lot of his rides in determining this because he had a lot of things already mapped out.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's really a great interest in that and I think we're going to really see, we're really noticing that people, especially from Iowa City, like to come down here and ride, ride the gravel roads down here. So just trying to fill that out a little bit and make that a little more of an attraction.
Cool. Thanks, Terry.
Anything else?
I really appreciate your passion and drive and creativity for making these things happen and making Fairfield the more of the most interesting destination that it can be.
Thank you, thank you. It's really fun and we, we look forward to working with the city and making more things happen and bringing some more people to town. Thank you.
Great, thanks. John Miller, Lawn Care and Water on the Parks.
Good evening. Thank you for the chance to meet with all of you. So I have a couple things to mention and they both come from the March-April issue of the Reader's Digest. Have any of you seen this yet? No subscribers to it, okay. So my dad got me a subscription years ago and I renewed it a couple of years back. And it's, this was quite interesting. This is a new idea that I had not previously considered, but the first article, they have two articles here. First article is Lawns, They're a Part of the American Way of Life. And some surprising little bits of information that they cited in the article. That one hour of water in your lawn takes 1,000 gallons of water. I really kind of doubt that. I don't think we have the water pressure in town here that would cause 1,000 gallon water flow in an hour. Maybe I'm wrong. But anyway, probably a few hundred gallons per hour anyway of water in the lawn. Gas mowers take 3 billion gallons of, of fuel per year nationwide. An hour of operating a lawn mower is equivalent to about 45 miles of driving your car. Lawns, this is, was a shock to me. Lawns use 10 times as much fertilizer as farms nationwide. And of course, the runoff has a kind of a detrimental effect on the waterways. Pesticides kill helpful insects and plants. Native grasses with deep roots would sequester a lot more carbon. And it would also help with, with the propagation of pollinators and birds as well as our mental health. That's what the author claims. So they encourage a couple of things. One is, is replacing your lawn with natural vegetation. The tall grasses, some of the other flowering plants, like what you might see up at Neil Smith, for example, or something like that. And an alternative would be, would be to do part of your lawn that way. And another idea they mentioned in the article is something that is being propagated nationwide. I don't know how many cities are doing this, but it is called No Mow May, No Mow May. And it's just that, not mowing your lawn during the month of May because the May month is the time for the propagation of a lot of pollinators and which could be increased a lot if people had lawns that were, again, more devoted to natural grasses and shrubs and so forth. So that is the one idea from that first article. And the second one is about the healing power of water. I think we're all familiar with that to an extent. People like to hang out at oceans, rivers, creeks, reservoirs, lakes, you name it, ponds. You know, Jefferson County Park has some nice ponds. So what they said in the article is reducing anxiety, easing mental fatigue, calming the mind, decreasing stress. Water naturally relaxes us, the sound of water, waves lapping on the shore, so forth. It's a, it's a very kind of a sedative effect, lets your mind wander in a positive way and so forth. I mention all that because what, as I was reading the article, what I thought about was, my wife and son, I moved here 13 years ago and the map that we got of the city, I think maybe the, it's still the same, I'm not certain, but the map that was available for years at least showed in Obie Nelson Park that there was a pond there. And I think some of you that have lived your life long, maybe you know that there used to be a pond and I think maybe it was converted to a city pool for a while, is that right? And then, and then.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I, I know, we talked about that and I'm not sure that's where it was, but.
Okay.
I thought that was the location of the former pond.
Was it?
It was a pool, but.
I, I was guessing that, but I don't know for sure.
And then they took that out, of course, and, and, but it was never reverted to a pond. So I thought, gee, maybe it's an easy matter of plugging the drain. If there is a, if there is a sewer system that was installed there, I don't really know. And restoring it, allowing it to be restored as a pond area for people to enjoy and again for habitat and kind of a wetland restoration and just to make it more attractive for people that walk through the park and so forth. So those two things, the first one is the, is the conversion of lawns to, some lawns or parts of lawns, to natural habitat. And the second one, the No Mow May, both of which, of course, might interfere with the city ordinance of 10-inch grass limit, okay? It wouldn't be called grass. It'd be something else, or maybe it's outside of the bounds of the law, I don't know. But those two proposals and then the third would be the consideration of restoration of the pond to the Obie Nelson Park. Okay? Any questions or comments?
You know, I think that the Environmental and Furniture Utilities Committee, we have discussed No Mow May. This was last year after May.
Oh, you did, huh?
Already occurred, so maybe it's something that we could consider again.
Oh, good, great.
I have heard of other communities doing it and then they do have some problems getting people to mow again.
Oh, yes?
Well, have you ever tried mowing 12 inches of grass with a lawnmower?
Well, yeah.
It's not easy to do.
Yeah. Okay. So, any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thanks for the chance to share.
Resolution action items and ordinances. First resolution is consideration of classifications in the fire department.
Yeah, last week I received the, a letter of, no, not necessarily resignation from Chief Hamis, but with his new changes in duties at Dexter, he's taking on a lot more responsibilities and it's more difficult for him to stay up with the, the duties of the fire chief. So he, he put in a letter requesting to move back to chief deputy. And with that, the chief deputy at this point is, or deputy chief, assistant chief, there we go. Yeah, is Brett Farrell and Brett's willing to step up as an interim to be the fire chief. Lyle, basically, they're fire, they're switching positions. Lyle has done a great job this last year and we appreciate his service. It's just understandably, it's a, it's a challenge with a part-time position and a demanding full-time job. So that's what we're asking is to essentially switch the two in position at this point in time. Both are here, if you had any questions for them or.
Well, what do you mean by interim?
I was going to ask that. I mean, I'm all for Brett doing this, that's great. But why, why are we still at interim and why, I mean, are we doing anything?
The interim part was at, to some extent, requested by Brett because of his position as EMA, or Emergency Management Coordinator, so that he can work with that to show his, his full-time position, that this is a position that won't hinder him in his part, or his full-time position where he can still do the part-time position, too. Brett, do you want to come add to that?
Sure.
That, if you don't want to, I guess you don't have.
This is better than doing COVID updates. No, I appreciate the, the opportunity to do this. You know, interim, like, like everybody in our fire department, it's a proud fire department, it's got a lot of traditions, but everybody's got a full-time job. And when we went from a part-time chief to a full-time chief with Scott, you know, was, and now you're back to a part-time chief. We've all got, like Lyle's got, you know, so. None of us know if it's going to work out in five, you know, down the road. So the interim was what I was requesting to put on there for now and move forward and work towards hopefully a full, or a long-term solution.
Do you have an idea of how long that interim, are we talking six months? Or do you want to just leave it and try it for a while and then come back to us?
Well, listen, I, I mean, I don't want to say I'm trying it. I mean, I've, I, I am moving forward and looking forward to serving as the fire chief and the challenges that, that, you know, with the new fire station, things like that. You know, the emergency management job is my, is my.
Prime job, yes.
That's my go-to thing and, you know, I don't see any conflicts. But if there was six months down the road and there was a conflict at a scene or something, then, then I would have to take a step back and say, you know, this isn't working out for me as a part-time chief. And so that's why.
Right.
You know, there hasn't been, I've been in emergency management eight years. Been a captain since 2013, assistant chief for a couple of years now, or, or for the last year and been in the fire department for almost 23 years. And in those eight years of emergency management, I've switched gears a handful of times where I arrived as a fire personnel and switched gears to emergency management on scene, so. I don't see any problems arising, but the interim was put on there just, you know, to kind of fill it out and see if there's anything that might arise.
So you've already thought through what that process would look like?
Oh, absolutely.
If we did have a, a natural disaster or something where your primary would have to shift into place first?
Right.
Right. Because that's always been there as you were part of the rest of the team anyway.
Yeah, so, you know, dispatch would, would, in, in a disaster-type situation, whatever it is, the great thing about the fire department is you've got awesome firefighters, you've got great officers. So the incident command structure stays. They all realize that there might be times where I have to, you know, do my, be my full-time job, which is, you know, very important. So you just hand off incident command to one of the officers and they know that I'm moving into position to make sure we're getting the resources for whatever incident you're going to have. And, you know, it can benefit both sides. I've been on car accidents and things like that where I was officer on duty and I transferred and then started calling DOT, other resources to get, make sure we had the road secured and things like that. But, so the interim, back to the interim thing, it's not something that I'm thinking I'm going to, just get out of, out of here in six months. I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Right.
Everybody understood what the rules.
It'll work until it doesn't.
The advantage we have here, too, is we have depth now because the assistant chief has also served as a full-time chief for at least a year.
Right.
So it's not like they're walking in, if he had to go to.
Right, totally trained in it.
So it's a good, good plan.
Yep.
And I guess I would just finish up by saying I want to thank Lyle for the time served as interim chief. And Lyle's a huge part of our fire department and moving forward. He's going to continue to be and he'll be a big asset to me and the department. And, you know, we talk about the full, you know, you've got a very proud fire department, you've got great firefighters. We witnessed that in the last couple of weeks, you've got great officers. And, you know, I just am honored to be still working with him, honored to be in this position.
Well, great, thank you for stepping up.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Make the motion to approve the classification change in the third quarter.
Second.
Thank you, Brett.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy. Any other discussion? I'll just say, thank you, Lyle. Appreciate your service for the last year and stepping up when we needed you and thanks for staying on, too. And Brett, thanks for stepping in. Appreciate it. Okay, no other questions, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham? Yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Twohill?
Yes.
Okay, next resolution, consideration authorizing change order authority. This is for our city engineer, Melanie Carlson, to take, be able to do change orders, not over 15,000, I believe it is.
I made the motion that we approve the authorizing change order authority to $15,000 for the city engineer.
Second.
Public Works Director.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Anderson. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Twohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Our next resolution, consideration designating city administrative duties and functions to our city engineer and our clerk.
I make the motion that we approve the designation of responsibilities to city clerk and city engineer as described.
I will second that.
They moved by Flornoy, second by Ham. Any discussion?
Yeah, could you explain what this resolution does briefly, please?
As we were discussing this gap for a better term, as Aaron leaves at the end of this week and the new administrator comes on, we needed to look at those duties that Aaron primarily covered and where Melanie can take on the more physical aspects and Rebecca taking on the administrative aspects and, and the mayor then with, also helping with financial if needed on certain things, documents at certain measures. So this way, all those administrative responsibilities are distributed on this administrative staff.
Day-to-day duties totally, totally displaced.
We did the same thing last time, we did a search for administrator.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I would move for approval.
We already have a, we've already got a Flornoy moved and we got a second by Ham.
Good.
Great. So any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Twohill?
Yes.
So the next action item is instead of public hearing for nuisance abatement schedule assessments for Monday, March 27th, 2023 at 7:00 PM.
Motion to stop public hearing.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Excuse me. Estee?
Yes.
Twohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Next action item, consideration of 2080 for fire station. The current fire station in the Jefferson County Public Health Department. in the Jefferson County Public Health Department. So we had talked about this earlier, there were a couple of changes. And I guess, Aaron, you want to go over there?
Yeah, we just indicated the square footage between the, the public health nurse and then what the fire station has. We also indicated insurance responsibilities for each individual entity along with the snow removal and maintenance of the, of the exterior of the building, who designated which responsibilities were done there. Were the additions to the 208E from what we got back from, or what we got from the, from the public health for the original 208E.
So a little more detail than what you had previously?
Move to approve City of Fairfield, Jefferson County Board of Health 208E agreement.
Okay, move by Gandy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion?
I just had a question regarding one part. It seems like there's a part missing under section two premises occupied by JCPH offices' date. I was just wondering if that still needed to be finished or if it was as-is?
I think it's a bit of an arbitrary date. We could pick just about anything because they've been there for a long time. So I, I don't know when they've actually occupied that or, in fact, that's the same comment Christine said to me. She's, she's like, we could just pick an arbitrary date because we've occupied the building. So I guess I don't know, we could leave that up to them as far as when they occupied it or if you guys want a date, we can put a date in there.
Well, why don't you date it with the current date since that's when the agreement begins?
That's what you want? We can do that.
Today, February 27th, 2023.
Okay.
Okay.
Makes sense.
We can do that.
Okay, any other?
Well, I guess, wondering what the council feels about rent-free, that's all. Just seems to me that we should be charging something.
Do you have a proposal?
I was gonna ask the property committee to address it.
So is this a referral to the property committee?
Well, we have a motion on the table already, but we hadn't part of the discussion, so I'm discussing it.
Why would, okay, let me ask this question. Why would, why should they be rent-paid?
It's a city-owned building and taxpayers have paid for it.
Right. This, I think this is basically a, sort of putting in the writing what has been the agreement for some time where public health has not paid rent. So we're asking to change the agreement or we're just asking, I think, to put in writing what we've already agreed, essentially been practicing for, I think, years now.
Right, like the 208E at the local center.
Right. So is there a proposal? I'm not sure.
We know what, just because this has been in place for 20 years doesn't mean it's a good agreement.
That's true.
In the interests of the taxpayers of the City of Fairfield.
That's true.
So typically, my understanding is you take the valuation of the building and take 1% of that amount as a monthly charge or rent for a building. Whatever that number would come out to be in proportion to what percentage they're occupying versus our current fire department.
I'm personally okay with it being rent-free because they're offering a service to our community that we need.
I agree. I made the motion.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
The other part is, is our, our city tax dollars do go to pay for, for that service already.
So do our city paid county dollars.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, I'm...
Is, I mean, I thought the building wasn't on the tax rolls.
It is not.
It's not.
Okay.
It will not pay taxes.
Okay.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second on the floor, so let's see and see if it passes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
No.
Estee.
Yes.
To Hill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Okay, so that passes with a six to one vote. Thank you. Next, we'll have a public hearing on the matter of the fiscal year 24 max levy, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wants to speak to that? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And Aaron, do you just wanna, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, we met with the Ways and Means Committee, was it last week?
Last week.
Last week and we went through the budget. It, it's a difficult year. Obviously, property taxes, or I should say revenue from property taxes with the 810 levy did not go up. It's, we, we had a reduction in our 810 levy again this year. So, but for the most part, we've had, we've got a decent budget with, with utilizing some cash reserves to cover the entire budget and keeping the levy respectable. So I, I would recommend passing the max levy. And then we'll discuss the budget at the next meeting, or you all will discuss the budget at the next meeting, sorry, with Rebecca. She won't throw anything at me.
You won't come back for that, huh?
He said he'd be.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the max levy?
So moved.
Moved by To Hill.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
To Hill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Estee.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Okay, action item, consideration to set public hearing on the fiscal year 24 capital improvements plan for Monday, March 13th, 2023 at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Estee.
Yes.
To Hill.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Okay, next action item, consideration to set public hearing on the fiscal year budget for Monday, March 13th, 2023 at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Estee.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
To Hill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Next action item, consideration of amendment number one to the engineering services agreement with Shive Hattery for the design of Highway One. I believe there's a cost of 50,500. Did you want to talk about that, about that, Nathan?
Good evening, Honorable Moan Council. This is first of a couple of items for Highway One on the agenda tonight. So the first two are amendments to our services. I'll talk about the first one here in order. So this is an amendment to our design services. So there's four components here. The first was some grant funding, application and assistance. So there's two different ones listed there. Those totaled about $580,000 of grants that were secured for the project. And we helped Melanie and staff apply for those through two different DOT programs. Second main item was some water main. So, as you know, Melanie worked on the water main along the roadway. We had to get it under the highway in one spot near Fillmore Avenue and incorporate that in with the actual Highway One construction plans. It has to be cased under the roadway as well, which basically means there's a steel pipe and the water main goes inside of that so you could pull the water main out without tearing the road out. Third item relates to some cost-saving measures. We did write at the end, there was a change in District Five staff for the DOT. There was a change in the cooperative agreement about whether the road had to be open or not to traffic. So we made some changes around that and hopefully make it easier on the overall timeline of construction and easier on the residents, along with removing some sidewalk. We removed some storm sewer intakes and had to do some, had to write a memorandum of why that was acceptable based on engineering judgment, which actually goes, because DOT guidelines were, had a lot of extra intakes that you really don't need in an urban setting like this. And the fourth item related to some property acquisition coordination. There's actually some items later on in your agenda tonight about property being transferred to the DOT and we helped Melanie coordinate that between your property acquisition agent and DOT staff and what they needed to see. So happy to answer any questions. That's kind of the quick overview.
Some of these services have already been provided.
Yeah, technically all these have been provided because we're later on in your agenda tonight. There's, the actual plans were bid here just recently. Some of these were a little bit older and at the time, like the funding agreements, I think those were maybe in 2021. And that, well, the first one is, the other one was a little bit later, but they're relatively small and at the time we kind of said, you know, I don't know that it's worth going in front of the council and we'll, we'll help you out with that. With the other things here at the end, they did start to add up, so we itemized that one as well when we came back to it. A lot of the, the value engineering items and the water main and the property acquisition, those have all been in the last couple of months here and just to keep things moving as we progress toward bid, we did perform those services sort of at risk.
So my other question to Melanie is, are these budgeted? Or are they within the budget for the project? I mean, you already spent them, you already have the services.
Yes, and I, like the water main, for example, I, I asked Shive to complete that work due to this, due to the schedule. Budgeted? Yes. I hesitate only because construction costs were a little bit higher than the engineers' estimate and we'll go over that in the, when we review the bids. I guess we're talking 50,000 of a $7 million project and they've been extremely helpful. They helped us get around $900,000 worth of grants, so...
Yeah, the other one's $500,000, a little low, so.
Well, the $500,000 one was budgeted. So the $50,000 one was extra stuff that I asked them to do because the last couple, six months have been crazy. So, but yes, they've been very, they've been very helpful in these extra things to get this project through a lot of things that have popped up and I would recommend approval of the 50,000.
So I make the motion to approve amendment number one to the engineering services agreement with Shive Hattery.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gandy. If any further discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Estee.
Yes.
To Hill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Okay, great. So the next action item is amendment number two to the engineering services agreement again with Shive Hattery for the construction of Highway One. So go ahead.
Yes, amendment number two, unlike the first one, these have not been performed. This is related to the actual construction that will start here in a month or two. As part of the cooperative agreement you have with the DOT, you're required to provide these services. And in concert with Melanie, it makes sense to us to do that. We offer these services and we know the project as well as anyone. This is, this is us on-site every day, us documenting all the materials that are used in the project, which the DOT will require for you to spend their primary road funds that they've agreed to pay, as well as construction material testing. So think about, or in concrete, making cylinders and breaking those, what was the strength? We'll handle all that.
I guess my only question is, if this is already budgeted, why is it amendment?
It wasn't included in the initial scope of services because we didn't know exactly what the design was gonna be, like how, what, were we gonna have a roundabout? Were we gonna have a traffic signal? You know, our original agreement was put together almost three years ago. And I think when the request for qualifications came out in 2019, this was all listed as eventually gonna be included, but not in the initial agreement.
Okay, make the motion to approve amendment number two, the engineering services agreement with Shive Hattery.
Second.
By Flornoy, second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
To Hill.
Yes.
Estee.
Yes.
Okay, next item is a public hearing on the matter of Highway One South Main from Fillmore Avenue to 300 feet south of Libertyville Road. So I will open the public hearing. Is anybody wanting to speak about that? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And then the next action item is the same, consideration of Highway One South from Fillmore Avenue to 300 feet south of Libertyville Road project. Nathan, do you want to say anything additional about this?
Hey, certainly, if you have any questions, you know, it's, it's Highway One, Libertyville Road to Fillmore Avenue, the, the roundabout at the Libertyville Road intersection, a little bit of an extension to the east. I can answer any questions you, you want to hear. The goal of the project is to get the roundabout kind of done first before they tear up too much of the rest of it.
Can you speak to the Casey's entrance, entrances down there?
Yeah, actually, I don't know, I have it on a flash drive. We can pull up a picture of it. That would work. There should be one PDF on there, page 47, it's got the staging.
It might take too long, but...
Well, if we get to it, we get to it. If we don't, we know, but...
We're not approving the project here, it just says consideration of, what are we approving?
So you have to approve the plans and specifications and then later you will decide to accept or reject bids, like that kind of thing.
So this is approving the plans and considerations?
That's my understanding.
There's no attachment here, I didn't know what we're...
I, I was told it would take, you guys weren't able to open it because it's so large. It's like 150 pages.
So it's clear here, all the plans and specifications for the...
Yeah, correct. It's 147 plan sheets, it's 97 megabyte file.
There's nothing attached and so it's a little bizarre by itself.
And first we approve the plan, then it goes out to bid?
No, it is, it's bid through the DOT. No, it is, it's bid through the DOT. We have bid. One of the later items Melanie has is a receipt of bids and we'll go over those.
All right. So back to the Casey's entrances.
Yes. Forty-seven is the start of the staging plan. But basically Casey has two, Casey's has two entrances, so we'll have one of those open at all times. A lot of times, both of them will be. So yeah, stage one there is the roundabout there in red. I think maybe the next sheet down has a blow up of that and kind of walk you through the staging of that roundabout. Go on down. Oh, that's the detour. So there'll be a sign detour on the bypass and down Burlington for anybody that's trying to go through. There is a kind of a way around that for Jackson County Health, but, oh yeah, so this is the actual roundabout staging. So the pink part will be constructed first. That won't impact traffic on either road other than some shifting. And then once we get that, so that's really to make that right turn northbound to westbound. So we can get to that second Casey's driveway over there in the next phase, which will be the next sheet down. This phase, that yellow portion will be constructed. So this is the most impactful to that intersection. So you'll be able to go northbound, you'd be able to turn west. Southbound, you'd be able to turn east. And in this one, the drive on the, on Casey's right on Highway One is open, and the other one has to get built in halves. There's a note where they can close half that driveway at a time. So we're trying to do everything we can to get people in and out of there. It won't ever be completely closed.
About how long are you talking for that?
We haven't actually met with the contractor yet, and they will dictate some of that, but the actual driveway itself shouldn't be more than maybe a week. The rest of that, the yellow part will be, you know, five, six weeks, seven weeks maybe.
The, the pink part in the first one, that's two-way traffic, right?
Two-way traffic, yeah.
Okay.
And the yellow is completely closed?
Yellow is closed, but they'd be driving on that pink part of the previous phase.
Right.
Makes sense.
So really impactful for a total of maybe two months.
Yeah, and once this is done, you can actually keep scrolling down through the staging plan here. Once this is done, that the roundabout itself will open. We'll start doing some of the portions around the outside, trails and sidewalks. And then the contractor can start marching to the, to the north. And they, they might not actually start right here in March North. There's a low point near the, kind of the dog park where the storm sewer is at its lowest point. Yeah, this stage here. And they may work on some of this while they're working on the roundabout as well, but we've told them they cannot close the road to traffic in this section of the project while the roundabout area is also closed. But they could start working on the storm sewer off the street because the street actually gets wider. It becomes three lanes versus two. So some of the storm sewer work can be going on, sort of like the utility work that's going on now.
At any point in time, will businesses along that route, will any of them be closed off completely?
No, they'll have access somewhere. Now, some of those come off like Buchanan, for example. Or there'll be a temporary granular drive to some of them down the side. It's it's construction. It's not super convenient, but we're trying our best to get everybody
Right.
a place to get in and out. Goal is to have roadway open to traffic by the end of the year, and construction would actually wrap up in spring of 2024 with seating restoration, some of those things. Maybe even some of the trail work might be done in 2024. But we have, I don't remember offhand the contract requirement we put in there, but they, they have to get the work done this year. We keep counting working days against them, which has a liquidated damages on the backend if they don't meet their number of days.
Hope to other cooperates.
That would be very helpful.
Okay, is there, oh, Melanie, you can say something?
Just real quick on the staging, and as a reminder, we'll be meeting with emergency personnel in the hospital to remind them of the stages. The school busing system will be notified of each of the changes of the staging. So we'll, we've got a group of people that we talked to preliminarily about the staging. And then we'll keep them update during the process, let them know of each of the staging because, you know, the bus routes will have to change with each stage and, and stuff like that. So we'll make sure to keep them up to date. And then also as far as public, we'll keep it out on Facebook as best we can in these meetings. And then I'm at the radio station once a month to go over, you know, what phase we are with all of that as well. And hopefully, we'll have some signage on Fillmore as well to help with the project directs and traffic as well. So we're working on, trying to work our best of public communications for this project going forward.
Great.
So. Motion to approve plans and specifications for South Main from Fillmore to 300 feet south of Libertyville Road.
Second.
Removed by Anderson, second by Tohill. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Yeah, so our next action item, consideration to authorize city staff to enter agreement for the Highway One project. So we're going to hear from Melanie about the bids.
Yep. And Jason, if you would bring the funding breakdown. So bids were received through the DOT on the 21st. Three bids were received. DOT asked that these stay confidential for a while. I can tell you, the low bid was for Wix Construction of Decorah, Iowa at $5,339,350.56, which is in that construction as bid line item. This is just a little bit over the engineer's estimate, which was 5.28. There were, as I said, there were three bids in total. The other two bids were very reasonably close. I mean, within one or two percent. I mean, they were.
The next highest was $60,000 higher.
Yeah, so very, very good for where we're at. So we feel very comfortable with those. What I'm showing you here is the overall project cost, everything from the preliminary engineering that we did three years ago to the easement purchases. Everything except for the easement purchases is the actual cost. The easement purchases is just rounded up a bit to include some legal fees that we haven't gotten final bills for. So that's the reason why that's a rounded number. But everything else is either the contract amount or the amount that we spent to date. So we're looking at just over $7 million. Prior to this point, we had a total established funds of 6.655, leaving around $427,000 remaining to be funded. As Nathan said, the road work should be done by the end of the year, but there will be items next construction season to be done. That's why I'm especially not too concerned about the remaining $400,000. A lot can change both directions in our favor or against us regarding the additional funding. You know, we, this, this is carrying a 5% contingency, which I think is good for a project this size. We may need it. We may need less. We may need more. But what, in, in summary, I think we have a very healthy, we have healthy balances in our street funds. We've been keeping those balances for this project and for the Crow Creek Bridge, knowing that these are large projects that need to stay moving regardless of what happens during construction. And so I feel comfortable recommending moving forward with this project despite being slightly underfunded at this point. And if you want to move it to ways and means to discuss the remaining funding, we can. Or we can wait till we get closer to closing out the project and knowing what the actual final costs are and determining that final amount. These, the lost balance and the road used balance, those are, that's in, those are unbudgeted. The CIP does use some road use balance, but that's actually already taken out of that number. So I mean, this is where we're standing with the budget that is proposed for you.
What's the 24 budget, right?
Yes, yep. And even the CIP for the following couple of years, I was not planning on using fund balances for any streets projects. Like I said, we've kind of been setting it aside for contingencies of these major projects. DOT has not released the bids and authorized signing of the contracts at this point. But if you feel comfortable to authorize the staff to enter into the agreement once we have those contracts, that would be the motion on the table for you.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes, I would so move.
Moved by Ham.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any further questions or discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Ham.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Okay, next is public hearing. So I'll open the public hearing on the matter regarding the conveyance and donation of real property. I think we talked about this last week. Correct?
Two weeks, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, yeah. Last meeting, that's what I should have said. So is anybody from the public want to discuss that? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, move on to the resolution. Consideration of conveyance and donation of real property. So if you just want to do a real quick snapshot of what that is for the public.
Yeah, so the property that was purchased for the additional seven feet of right away, we purchased seven feet of right away on both sides of Highway One to accommodate the storm sewer and the trail. Those were purchased in the city's name. Because this is a state roadway, it should have been purchased in the state's name. So this is transferring those properties from the city to the Iowa Department of Transportation. The properties that are involved are listed in the attachment, if any.
Do you? I'm sorry, this is seven additional feet to the existing right away.
Seven, yes, the existing is 66 feet wide, and we bought 14 additional feet, seven on each side.
Just to be clear.
Yep, yep. And the, the, the project paid for the dollars. The prod, or paid for the fun, sorry, paid for the right away. There are city funds, but there is also DOT funds being used to pay for this right away. So.
I'll make the motion to approve the conveyance of property from the city of Fairfield to the state of Iowa, DOT.
I'm just double checking the resolution. I put it away. Yes, state of, it just says state of Iowa.
Okay, state of Iowa then.
Moved by Flornoy, or is it second?
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Next action item, consideration to rescind resolution number 4130 dated January 23, 2023, approving construction contract and bond for step three improvements. 2022 bid package number two for Main. So I think
This is the same as last time.
We lost Melanie. This is, pardon me?
This is the same explanation as last time, isn't it?
Correct.
So I'll make the motion to approve the rescinding of resolution 4130.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? I'll please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Okay, then the next resolution is to approve the construction contract and bond.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Uh, next is the first reading of ordinance number 1145. Uh, and this all has to do with North Campus Village, and I'll just, I'm not going to read all this.
I was wondering if you're going to read that paragraph.
No, I just thought, yeah, it's, you just explain it. That'll be better.
Yeah, basically what we're doing is we're putting in the amendment to allow us to collect the TIF increment to pay for the developers agreement that we put in place a couple of years ago. Basically, Vastu Partners has done the, uh, done the improvements to the property that they had promised in the developers agreement. They've made the request to start the TIF clock running. So we need to put the ordinance in place that we can start with the collection of the increments so that we can play, pay that, the developers agreement.
Make the motion move, doesn't have a number. What is it?
1145.
1145, there it is. Move ordinance 1145 from the first to the second reading.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ham. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Esti.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Great, thank you, council. Um, under the mayor's report, actually, I don't have any board appointments. But I wanted to remind everybody that we do have an open house for Aaron on Thursday from 2:30 to 4:30 in the afternoon. And let's give him a good send off. And again, we wish you great success in Carroll, Iowa. Hope it's a good move for you. And we'll be fine while you're gone for a little while. So anyway, come have cake. We have cake coming, right? So, great. All right. And the next thing is, I've got a little video Jason's going to put on, and there hasn't been an official press release yet. But the city of Fairfield applied, or we applied, and I should say Bob Ferguson drove this process and worked with Mindy McAdams of the Chamber and Josh and myself to go over this application. It has to do with Smart, Smart 21 cities. My understanding is over 400 cities applied worldwide. And they have named 21 cities as finalists. And to put it in a nutshell, if we think of roads or railroads making cities successful in our past day, broadband is, is that way we do it now. And so Bob, do you want to say anything real quick about that? And then we'll listen to this video.
Sure. I just printed a few things off the website, just so everyone can have one. One is the awards process, and one is putting a model that this organization has developed that's been going for 22 years. So I think I'll just, pardon me. I'll read a quick statement, just so you kind of get context to what this is about. And then we can see the cool video. So it says, "Starting in 2000 with a research project comparing cities in various nations, Intelligence Cities Forum created a unique data-driven approach to development to put citizens first while tapping the enormous economic and social potential of technology. Economic growth today takes much more than decent infrastructure and available land for development. It requires a whole growth approach that unites people, policies, programs, and technology. In a world dominated by digital, our mission is to help communities create innovative and growing economies, inclusive societies, and affirming cultures open to the world. We do it for communities large and small, in urban clusters, in outline suburbs, and rural places. We believe that digital connectivity and technology create the opportunity for almost every community to develop a dynamic local economy and the social and cultural strengths that go with it, giving them all a chance to be great places to live, work, learn, grow, raise a family, prepare a path for the next generation." And where this came from is I've been part of a discussion group of people that include Paul Carlson, who was the IT head of Columbus for 17 years. And he worked with the mayor for five years to win this award, the number one. We made it the top 21. Next one is the top seven, and then one city gets chosen. He worked for five years to get that. And almost immediately after getting designated the most intelligent city in the world for that.
So Bob, was this Columbus, Ohio?
Columbus, Ohio, yeah. Yeah, not Columbus Junction. Columbus, Ohio. They, they immediately saw an influx. There's one, one major thing that the, the, really the determining factor for bringing about $400 million of investment was in winning this award. And they just got the intel plant, 1,000 acres and $13 billion. So he feels like this was a game changer for Columbus. Now, we have not won number one yet. But we're going to compete to be in the top seven. And to put this in perspective, there are over 400 cities around the world that compete for this. And so it's a pretty big honor. And it really, we won this not because we just have good broadband, which we do. We have better broadband than many places, in fact, many tech places. It's really what we've done with it. It's really, we are actually a lab for what these guys have been talking about. That if you do broadband and do it well, and you do it early, and you use that to drive economic development, when you think about our town, would Cambridge investments have been possible without fiber? Would all of the knowledge workers and home workers and other businesses really been possible? So when, I'm part of this group, and Paul is part of it, and the guy from Penn State. And he's been needling me for more than a year. And Aaron, you know, we, Aaron and I sat with this thing many, many months ago, and he finally said, "Bob, are you going to just fill in the dang thing?" Because knowing what I know, and knowing what you've told us about Fairfield and what I've researched, this guy is on the committee that chooses the winner every year. He's an international juror. He said, "Just fill it out." And so I said, "Okay, I'll do my best." And I asked him to Google a bunch of things. And then I ran it through Josh and Mendy, and then Paul again, and then Connie and I sat for an hour and a half or so and refined it. We hit the go button. And I was sitting there after three hours of webinars that morning, jumping up and down on my ball, feeling like a kid at Christmas. I go, "Oh, boy, okay, we gotta make it, we gotta make it, we gotta make it." I haven't had those feelings for years. And one name, another, you'll see it, another name, another. I said, "Come on, Miami. Fairfield, Jefferson County, Iowa, United States." And I go, "Yes." So anyway, we, it's a big deal. It now becomes part of our brand. That we're one of the 21 smartest cities and most intelligent cities in the world, according to these guys. And it also comes with a lot more. We have a cohort of 20 other cities, including Perachiva Brazil, which is one of the most progressive cities in the world, and places in Azerbaijan, and in Vietnam, in Australia, all over the place. And so we get to be part of that cohort. The other thing in my view that we get to do is we look at even that original, the original is just mainly checkboxes. And then anytime you can put a link, I put a link about a cool thing, even if it didn't even relate to that thing. We just larded it up as much as possible. This, so we, it was very obvious where we were very strong and where there was real, real room for improvement. So there's things that we can do right away that will upscore us because we have two months to complete the second round, which is actually much more of an essay. Now, if you look at the one, the one that has the six strategies, the paper that has the six strategies, one is the is the contest rules, and the other is the six strategies. We get to basically tell three stories in each of those categories. So we get to tell 18 stories about our community and what we've done, which I feel gives us a really unfair advantage. Because we. which I feel gives us a really unfair advantage, because we simply have a lot more to say than a lot more to crow about than most cities much, much larger than us. So that's the deal. There's, uh, you know, it doesn't require any money. It just requires a little bit of time and attention, and, uh, Josh is excited about it, and I spent an hour and a half with him on Saturday morning talking about it. Mendy is super excited. Connie and I met this morning. And, um, it's something that the council will be involved with, I think increasingly, as, as we come up with ideas and things that we can do to really live into. If some international body calls us one of the twenty-one, uh, most intelligent cities in the world, that invites us to gap analyze and see, what are we tolerating that a smartest city in the world may not really wanna tolerate? Where can we gap, gap analyze to become better? So as a citizen, I'm super excited about this, and, um, I think we should feel really, really good.
So, council, this video's about five minutes. If you want, I, we could just mail it out to you. Um, he's said a lot more than, uh, you know, explained it quite a bit, so this is a real, you know, it can be a mocking piece for us.
It's a cool video. I mean, if you got five minutes, it's worth, it's worth watching it.
Going forward. Um, so it's up to you if you'd like to take the time, um, or we can send it out to you.
I'd prefer to get by email.
Okay. Let them do it out there. Watch it lead their leisure. Okay, thanks, Jason.
Do you know the minute where Fairfield's announced, so we could at least jump to that minute?
Oh, oh, yeah. It's about, it's about, yeah, it's, it's pretty, pretty, it's not that, it's not that long.
All right. So, yeah, let's just.
Email it out.
We'll send it out. We'll send it out to you, and then we'll also get it out on Facebook. And there's gonna be, Bob's gonna put an official press release out there, and, uh, I think Andy's gonna do.
Well, actually, you have the press release.
Right.
You know, it's changing, man. Andy is working on an article.
Yeah, Andy's working, Andy Hallman's working on an article for the Southeast Daily Union, so.
Cool.
At any rate, so moving on, um, city attorney report.
Yeah. Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things. I wanna catch the council up on, uh, what Weston talked with us about at the last meeting when you were considering the, uh, mobile home parks and the conditions you put on the license at leisure living. Since then, uh, we've worked a, uh, form of affidavit that you fill in the blanks on. It allows the park owner to go to the treasurer's office and get what's called a valueless vehicle title, which is like a junk vehicle title if you're scrapping your car. But what's been going on, uh, there were identified six abandoned trailers out there, which were all Isors, and a couple others that weren't designated abandoned. But so far, uh, those valueless vehicle titles have been transacted four times. There's been construction dumpsters out there. Telehandlers have crushed four trailers and disposed of four trailers already, uh, in the time since our last meeting about the conditions. So I consider that real progress as far as, and I think Weston does too. I talked to him earlier. This evening, that's going to go on, uh, as far as at least three of those other vehicles. There's some things out there. They've been picking up and putting in the, uh, construction dumpsters on-site, uh, places where trailers were moved, but they left some rubble and debris. So that's another condition in a letter that we gave the, uh, park owner. And then the last thing has to do with trimming and mowing and so forth, and that has to do with a contract for that. That'll come up later this spring after grass grows. But I think it's been kinda heartening to see that that stuff is happening like clockwork right now. Uh, that's one thing. The other thing is, and, uh, Elizabeth, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
All righty. Um, is it all right if I talk a little bit about the ambulance situation?
Of course.
All right. Well, tomorrow morning at eight, we're having a meeting of the twenty-eight E Agency Board. Uh, we've had some email correspondence with the, uh, service provider. Uh, again, uh, they have thrown us a curve as far as not providing transport service, uh, or choosing when not to, and we've had, um, about a dozen situations where they chose not to provide transport service, and our hospital has looked elsewhere to get transports for patients. Uh, we never had that happen before we got done with mediation over the emergency nine-one-one services that we got an injunction to require them to continue to perform. So, uh, that being said, uh, we'll have more to talk about in this morning meeting about the, uh, refusals to do transport, which is different than the emergency nine-one-one services. The three lawyers, uh, that were involved in the restraining order and in mediation, we filed a report, uh, with the district court, uh, last Friday that said we thought we had a settlement at mediation. We, uh, learned the week after we got done with, uh, a draft amending agreement under the mediation concerning the nine-one-one services, that, uh, there was another area of service that was going to go unfulfilled, and that this was after two and a half years of us relying on them doing that service regularly. Uh, so, uh, the judge wanted to know if we were gonna have a hearing today or not. We were supposed to, three days after the report, come back and have a finishing hearing on the restraining order hearing we had earlier in January. Uh, that didn't happen. We told the judge we need more than a half hour apiece to put on what we wanna show about the transport issue. So the judge, uh, entered an order, said we're not having the hearing right now, but we're all to get together with defense counsel. We're supposed to, uh, defense counsel, care ambulance counsel, uh, and, uh, we're supposed to have the court administrator assign us a trial date, um, in the reasonable near, near future, but I'm guessing that might be a month or two out, and we're still gonna have the same issues about transport. Uh, the other issue that we'll probably be discussing, uh, and Elizabeth may know more about this or say more about it than myself, is what are we doing, uh, to look at October first, the end of this contract? What are we doing as far as anything else in the interim that may fall off, uh, if there are more refusals under the present contract? So, uh, it's kinda messy right now.
Elizabeth, do you have anything else to add?
You know, I don't, there, um, there's, as John said, there's gonna be a meeting tomorrow, and I think that, you know, part of those discussions will be what, what our ambulance service is gonna look like until October, and then going beyond that. So I will definitely have more to report at, um, the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
John, I'm just curious, since the, the transport service was part of their contracted rate, how are we funding outside transport service for the next?
Um, our hospital administrators are trying to find, uh, available services in the region. Uh, there is a private transport out of Etumwa that they've called a couple of times. Uh, there've been a couple of times when the situation was compelling enough that they, uh, uh, went as far as Burlington. Mount Pleasant, uh, has talked to us about doing it, but I don't believe they have yet. We've reached out to every surrounding county that has a different provider, uh, and the theory is we're gonna have mutual aid. Uh, but it's more designed for emergency situations than it is for the regular transport, taking mom from the nursing home in for her appointment and back out and that kinda stuff. They have right to prioritize in this contract, and we agreed with them at the time, but then they didn't operate like it meant anything for two and a half years. We agreed at the time we did the contract that we wanted them to prioritize the emergency services first, and if we had to find a substitute for a transport that was routine, uh, that they could say, "We're gonna have to go with the priority, uh, if you can understand why we're refusing to take this transport because of a need to be here on the emergency, uh, level. Uh, we're gonna invoke that." Two and a half years that never got invoked. All of the sudden, it's been invoked about a dozen times, and that's all been since mediation. So, uh, we're thinking there's something funny in the fish house.
Is CARE doing any transports?
Pardon?
Is CARE doing any transports at all right now?
Um, I, I think they have to have done some. Their, uh, their monthly, uh, stats and their quarterly reports they give us at our regular meetings with twenty-eight E, uh, there are more transports than that that takes place than the eight or twelve that we were told about in the last two emails, so, um, they have to be doing some.
Okay. Is that all, John?
Yes.
Three? Okay. Committee and board reports, ways and means?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Uh, water and sewer?
Uh, water and sewer met this evening at six-thirty prior to this meeting. Um, it was myself, Martha, and Aaron Corcoran's in attendance, and Rebecca, Rebecca Loper. Uh, we had three things on the agenda, and the first one was, um, we talked about here at the last meeting about, um, changing the sewer, um, reduction request policy, where previously they were allowed one request per lifetime ownership of a property. And we felt that there may be circumstances or instances that come up down the road. Um, and, uh, one of these was the business that had a request six and a half years ago that we approved and, and has recently had a, a second request, um, and we felt like it would be approved if they had not had the previous one. So we did, um, Rebecca rewrote the policy with, just with one extra clause in it, and we did go ahead and, and approve that in the meeting this evening. Um, and then the other two were sewer reduction requests. Um, one of them, let's see if I have my notes here real quick. One of them was a, I've got them backwards here. Um, water that had basically, um, uh, the first one was the one that we changed the policy for, I'm sorry. So they had a sewer reduction request for five thousand five hundred and seventy-three sixty-seven, which was water, a busted pipe outside, and the water went into the ground. So, um, that is the, uh, the difference in the average for the sewer reduction only. So we request that, um, that five thousand five hundred and seventy-three sixty-seven be approved to leisure living. I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I guess I don't understand. Is this a policy, is this a city policy that we?
It, it had always been a policy that the owner of a property could request one sewer reduction request.
Is it a city policy?
Yes.
Is it a written policy?
Yes.
Yes.
So we have to change the policy, right?
And, and the, the committee has the authority to change the policy, which we did, yes. Which, it was kinda news to me tonight, too, but I found that out, so. Do you want me to read it to you real quick?
No, the reduction request, how much is that for?
Five thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-seven cents.
I've moved approval.
Okay.
Oh, that's a second.
There's already been one, so.
Yeah, yes. Is there any other discussion?
Yes. Can you read the policy, please?
Sure. Uh, the, the rest of the policy remains the same. I'll just read the part that we changed. And it says, "Customers may make more than one sewer adjustment request for their address. The request will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis and may require further review from the city administrator, water and sewer utilities committee, and the city council. This allows for any leaks that may overlap into two billing cycles, adverse weather conditions that affect plumbing, or accidents that may occur at the address presenting the adjustment."
That's the change, correct?
That's, that's the additional clause that's been added to the policy.
So where is the, where does the water and sewer committee get the authority to make that change?
The water and sewer committee is the ones who approved the policy when it was first created.
Yes.
The water and sewer committee, or the, they recommend?
It was the city administrator, the city clerk, as the supervisors, and the water and sewer committee.
Does the council approve the policy, or this?
They hadn't before, no.
So the water and sewer committee can make this change?
To our, it's our. It's our operating procedure, so to speak.
We don't have a policy of that.
Apparently, okay. So, okay, well, I mean, it's, it's rather substantial.
There's some history, Paul. We used to have a water board of trustees, and it got voted out of existence, and we put it on the hands of a committee, at which point it got passed around for about a year about whether some of this was gonna be decided in-house, whether it was gonna all be the committee or whether it was gonna be the council. I was around then, and the council didn't wanna consider every water reduction request. They come up every month, I believe, if not every meeting. But, uh, anyway, that, that's how it got where it is right now, and they had some, uh, lesser, uh, policies than the ones that are spelled out pretty nicely right now. So that's what I know about it, is that it evolved to where it is.
So, so as long as we're, um, we're confident that the water and sewer committee has the authority to change that policy, correct? All right.
Apparently, yes, we do.
It's just historical.
Historical.
Historical authority.
Yeah.
Momentum.
Okay.
It may be hysterical.
There was a time when the council did not want every sewer reduction request on the agenda.
I would think that it would be a good idea for the council to approve citywide policies.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, makes sense to do that.
Seems to make, yeah, yeah. I mean, for a committee, if that's a, if we, if you have the authority, but for the, as a general rule, for the committee to be a committee to be able to change policy, seems fairly significant. I mean, I think that's what the council is for.
What do you think about the next work session? We have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
In a second. We do have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Any other discussion? No, please call the roll. Toohill?
Yes.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
No.
Ham?
Yes.
Anderson? Esti?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
No, I have one more.
Yes.
Sorry.
We got you.
Okay, next is, um.
I have one more. There was, there was a third one. That's all right. There was a third one on the, um, agenda, and it's a sewer adjustment, uh, sewer adjustment request at five oh two West Depot. It was for an apartment. She was out of town for a month. She had a busted pipe under her sink. The water ran down into a cellar, into the ground underneath. And the adjustment request is for four thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirteen cents for the sewer portion of the bill. And I will make a motion to approve.
Second. All of these have been inspected by the city employees.
Yes, they've all been looked at.
To ensure the water's gone down, or not gone down the drain.
Right.
Correct. We have, we have a report from the city employee that went and checked. That's filled out for us.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? There is a motion, a second. No, please call the roll. Toohill?
Yes.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Maybe we should consider next fall putting a reminder in people's water bills to turn their water off and put their heater in vacation mode before they leave town for three months.
This, this was, this one here was in less than a week.
Yeah, but if you turn the water off, there's only so much water that you'll get on the floor.
Right, but.
I mean, every house has a valve right inside the house where you can just turn the water supply from the city off at that point.
Mine doesn't. It's in a pit out front.
Okay, next on the agenda is the board of adjustment. Melanie's here, I think she wants to say something about that.
Hey, sorry, just a couple of things that I wanna point out. Um, first of all, that one of the action items was to approve a schedule for their meetings, um, and one of the things that this does is it sets a due date for the applications for the board of adjustment. Planning and zoning has, has the same thing. So people know that if they get their application turned in by this date, they are able to be on a board of adjustment meeting that is set on this date, and we'll, we'll have that up on the, um, website, but if anyone comes into the planning and zoning office and wants to know, it's a set policy, everyone's treated the same, we're not trying to frantically put together meetings, and it's, um, uh, set ahead of time. So that was on there. Uh, next, because, um, there was, I guess, a significant change, um, that Scott Willman was elected as chair, so we appreciate him volunteering, but, um, Ed Kalini, um, stepped down his chair, or Ed Kalini has served as chair for a very long time on that board. Um, I think there was some sort of joke that no one can even remember how long he had served on the board, so, um, anyway, we appreciate his, uh, time serving as chair of that board. And then lastly, just. And then lastly, just, there was a conditional use issued for rental, and normally the board of adjustment meetings come to you. If there is a variance for you to consider whether to send that back to board of adjustment, there is no action for you guys to consider on the conditional use. So there is no action I need for the council and the board of adjustment.
Great. Thank you. Administrative department reports, project update. Lots of stuff going on, lots of exciting things happening. Are there any questions? Four pages of exciting. You're doing a good job. Anything?
Well, as you all know, this is my last meeting. It's been an honor to be allowed to be your city administrator for the last five years. I've enjoyed it. I think the city is in a very good place at this point in time. I think going forward, providing the state legislature doesn't mess with our property taxes too much, we are going to be in a good place fiscally over the next few years. I would definitely recommend the city to become active in the League of Cities and get involved. I hope the next city manager or administrator, I will certainly contact them too, to get involved, because our state legislature at this point is stepping all over the home rule law. With that being said, this city has a number of great department heads and does a very great job of providing service. You're all in good hands. Between Melanie and Rebecca, the leadership that we've been able to put together has been fantastic, and us as a team, I think, has done some very good things over this last five years. So again, I've enjoyed working with everybody. I've enjoyed the city of Fairfield since I've been here. Thank you.
And come eat cake on Thursday. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Yes, there's a second. All those in papers say aye?
Aye.
All those who say aye, sign. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Sorry.